Good evening, everyone. The January 16th, 2025 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called a call to order. Won't you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, by way of roll call, we have trustees Mitchell, Jennings, Ratan, and trustee Hamel here in person. You can tell it's been a long week for me. And I believe we have trustees Cross and Laura Smith-Evatt on the phone. Is that right?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we have a full attendance tonight. Kind of an empty room, though. You can tell it's January, so thanks to those of you who braved the 48-degree January temperatures to come to the meeting. With that, let's start with the awards and recognition, and I'll pass the baton to Dr. Judy Korb.
I don't believe we have any awards and recognition tonight.
All right, well, this is a nice theme.
Hey.
Let me see if I can keep it going. This is the time. I miss that, though. I miss the awards and recognition.
I know, I know. We'll pick it back up.
All right. Now is time for the open forum section of the board agenda, and the open forum section is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are linked to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and in that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes, or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. There are no registered speakers at tonight's meeting, and so with that, we'll move right along. Board reports are up next, and the first item on the agenda is the Student Senate Report by Logan Grigsby. I understand that he is supposed to be here, but I don't see him in the audience yet, so I'm going to circle back to that after we get through with the other board reports. That means, Mr. Dick Carter, you are up next with the report from our college lobbyist.
Now, we can only keep up this pace if you don't ask any questions after I'm done. So three days ago, Topeka grew by 165 residents for the next 90 days. Monday was the first day of the 2025 legislative session, and this morning, bright and early, the community college sector greeted legislators as they came into the State House today with a donuts event. And your college was well represented by trustees Hamel and Mitchell. We saw probably, well, we saw as many of the Johnson County legislators that came in as we could as they were walking by. They really had to pass us, so they had no other choice but to stop and talk to us. But it really was a good event, and we had some great conversations that started off the day, and it's probably a good thing because the pace of activities in Topeka is not going to slow down. And that's not an uncommon statement for me to make when the legislature is in session, but this year's a little bit different. There is a leadership intent on finishing the session by April 12th, and I've mentioned this in previous reports. We've heard it, but we continue to hear that same company line, not only from rank-and-file legislators, but still from leadership. And when I say be done by April 12th, that means they're not coming back for additional work. So anything that would require a veto override, anything that would require last-minute decision-making would need to be done before then. That is a tall order. And so the budget process really is what is driving that. Staff is overwhelmed with that legislative budget process right now, and that might be one reason why we haven't seen, even though we're on day four, lots of times we'll have prefiled bills in double digits. We will have by now many bills introduced, both in the House and Senate, and I think that that workload behind the scenes that everyone doesn't see going on is pretty strong right now, and so that has limited some of the other bills that we might see being introduced around this time of the year. It's not necessarily a bad thing. So like I said, the budget process is happening quickly next Thursday, so a week from today is when the two-year sector presents its case to the House Higher Ed Budget Committee. That may be one of the only opportunities that we have for proposing any changes that might be needed based on the budget that was printed in House Bill 2007 earlier this week. And so that'll be the base budget bill that is being used on the House side. I'm not sure if the mechanics still work, the way we're hearing that the legislature wants to do it, that it goes through the House and then over to the Senate, but it's probably not going to be far from that. The governor presented her budget priorities last night as part of her State of the State address. Those were reviewed this morning by the governor's budget director. It was nice to hear the governor give recognition to Senator Baumgartner, who led the way in the blueprint for literacy effort last year, and she gave her that call-out in the State of the State address. And so it's always nice when you hear those good things mentioned for people that have been a part of your organization, and we appreciate the work that she did while serving in the Senate. The Tax Committee met this morning. Trustee Hamel, I'm sorry you had to leave early because trustee Mitchell got to observe a scintillating debate on a constitutional amendment, so much so that that hearing went on this afternoon and may very well still be going on right now while we're meeting here. That's one of many tax proposals that the legislature will be considering. Property tax is the big buzzword. We've been talking about it for months, sort of preparing for what that looks like. I don't know if that constitutional amendment goes all the way through the House or not, but there's going to be other opportunities. I think one of the things that we'll see probably play out is statewide mill levy reduction. And when I say statewide mill levy, there's really only 21 and 1/2 mills that apply to that argument. There's 1 and 1/2 mills that go for the state educational building fund, so the higher education building fund, and then there is a state building fund that funds building repairs, onboarding maintenance for state buildings like the Center for the Blind or hearing in Olathe. And so I foresee, well, there's a bill out there that will be heard in the Senate that will take away that 1.5 mills collected statewide. There's one that was introduced in the House that would reduce the 20 mills for K-12 education also by 1.5. If those two are combined, and that could be part of the game plan, that's a 3-mill statewide reduction. It's meaningful enough that it meets the mark for reducing property taxes. I think we're going to see some other proposals out there as well. Those will be the things that I'm watching very closely to make sure that any type of property tax conversation doesn't impact the decisions that you're making around this table here. Back to the budget process. I think that state agencies are preparing for what could be a cut to their budgets. We're going to continue to follow what that looks like for all of those that are part of the budgeting process. The budget will need to be completed by the end of March, the first part of April, if we're truly going to meet the April 12th deadline for adjournment. And so again, that is a very fast process, considering that the consensus revenue estimating group usually doesn't meet until sometime after the 15th of April to discuss what additional caseloads there might be out there, or any unplanned expenses that the state might not be prepared for or might not have discussed during the budgeting process. So again, that'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Again, this is kind of new territory that we're exploring. At this point, it's just sort of stay tuned, and that's what we'll be doing. There will be some what we call rats-and-cats bills that ultimately make their way into the process, that will likely weigh in on or have some impact on higher education or the two-year sector, but that's kind of where we're at right now, four days in, well into the budgeting process, which is quite a bit faster than normal. So I think I would stop there, Madam Chair, and attempt to answer any questions if people choose to ask them.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for your report. Any questions from my fellow trustees here at the podium? Trustee Cross, how about you? Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carter, Senator Baumgartner is retired now, hasn't she?
She has indeed, yes.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for referencing and mentioning that because she'd been a trustee, an employee, but a longtime friend and ally of the college, and we certainly do appreciate her, so thank you for mentioning that. Nothing further, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Smith-Evatt, did you have any questions?
Yes, just one. Dick, you mentioned the revenue group usually meets, and I did not catch the date of when they usually meet, that would be near the end of the legislative session.
Yeah, they meet twice a year, once in the middle part of November and once in the middle part of April to make those revenue adjustments or forecasts, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your report. It sounds like it really is very much a wait-and-see-how-this-is-going-to-go sort of unfamiliar territory, so certainly we look forward to hearing from you next month, when you'll probably have a better idea of how things are progressing. So thank you as always, and safe travels back to Topeka.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is the report from the College Council and Mr. Jason Arnett. Good evening.
Good evening. I didn't submit any prepared remarks because I don't have much to report today, so we're going to keep going right along, and we're going to try and make Dick's report the longest one. College Council did not meet this month. Thank you, snow days for that. That slid us back a little bit, but that didn't stop Dr. Barry J. Bailey and I presenting our communication report to the campus twice this week, and then we released it to the campus through Info Hub on the College Council website. So every time we have presented on communication at the college, we're always, "Any questions?" and there's never any questions, so we feel like communication's been achieved, but this closes the book. This closes the book on an item called Item 61 from Staff Council that we feel is adequately resolved, although communication is never solvable, so we're going to keep monitoring communication through College Council and shared governance, and that's going to be our focus for the coming year, is making sure that everybody knows how things go through shared governance structures. So that's really all I got.
Well, thank you for that, and before I open it for questions, you know, communication is always an ongoing struggle. Those of us who have been married for a few decades fully recognize that, so.
Yes.
It is a little ironic, though, that you're presenting on communication and there's no communication, but maybe that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, mine, yeah.
It seems to be going over well. So any questions for Mr. Arnett? Any questions from anybody on the phone? Hearing none. Oh, go right ahead.
Hi, thank you, Madam Trustee. I would just make a comment that I really thoroughly enjoyed sitting next to Mr. Arnett this week during the Presidential Search Committee, and I appreciate all that he does for the College Council as well as serving on the Presidential Search Committee, and that's my comment.
Thank you for that. And you know what else? You're always so happy. You walk up to the podium and just get everybody all cheered up. Those of you who can't see Jason when he's walking to the podium, it's really a delight, so thank you for that.
I do the best I can, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the Faculty Association Report, and Ms. Andrea View.
Unfortunately, I will not be as short as Jason, so I'm sorry. My name's Andrea View, and I'm the president of the JCC Faculty Association. As you know, school starts next week, which means the campus professional learning days are this week, and faculty and staff development worked to put together a variety of programs for everybody around campus and all of our employees. A lot of the programs this week center on students and how we can best support students, which is nice because that's what we're all here for. And some of the sessions include things like incorporating neurodiverse communication skills into classes, incorporating debate into classes, helping students learn how to take notes, understanding Gen Z and the upcoming Gen Alpha, student cohorts, belongingness, accessibility, and then trauma-informed response. So there's some more student-focused programs. The Master Teacher Workshop wrapped up earlier today. The Master Teacher Workshop started in 1993 and then was revised again in 2018. It brings together faculty from all around campus. I believe there were 24 participants this year, and it's a focus on teaching and learning. So basically, the highlights include some of the more established faculty coming to give presentations on how they approach teaching in their classrooms, and then the participants do breakout sessions where they share teaching strategies with each other. It kind of wraps up with a nice party and award ceremony, and then I think this morning they do their wrap-up session with the spider web activity that demonstrates the interconnectedness and the connections that people weave through going through that program. During our professional development contract days in December, faculty development and the CTO fellows, with support from EdTech, hosted an end-of-semester faculty celebration. And that day-long program included a discussion on faculty and student wellness and wellness strategies. There was a program on regular and substantive interaction and online courses, and then there was also a program on AI and teaching, and how we can best think about, you know, addressing AI issues, but as well as thinking about the future workforce needs and how to prepare students for that. We all kind of came together over a Mediterranean buffet prepared by Dining Services. It was wonderful, and there were various spaces available for faculty to engage with activities and each other. So more than 100 full-time faculty participated in that event, and it was, and a multitude of part-time faculty as well, because it was open for all faculty, and then we also had some staff there as well that kind of interacted with faculty on a regular basis. Overall, wonderful, you know, very well-attended event. Well, that event was going on in the collab, the main collab space. There was also a secondary event going on with author Richard Reeves, who wrote the book titled "Of Boys and Men: Why the Modern Male is Struggling, Why It Matters, and What to Do About It." That book was published in 2002, and essentially, in the book, Reeves describes challenges facing boys and men, mostly in the U.S., but some outside the U.S. examples as well, and the struggles that they're having with education, career, work, and family. And so he advocates for kind of policy solutions to address those inequities. That all came about because Dr. Ty Edwards, who is a professor of history and the director of the Kansas Studies Institute, was heard author Richard Reeves on a New York Times podcast, and then had had just some general conversations with other faculty around campus about it, and then they started a book group. So there were about, with the help of faculty development, faculty development helped pay for some books for faculty to read and other, I think it was, there were even deans and administrators and staff involved as well. There were about 50 participants in that room, and in December, they got to Zoom with the author and hear his thoughts, share what their experiences are, and then hear what his suggestions for community colleges facing these challenges would be. Their plan is to continue engaging with Professor Reeves. He is the founder of the American Institute for Boys and Men. It's AIBM.org if you're interested in that website. When asked about those recommendations, basically what he suggested was for us to join AIBM's Higher Education Male Achievement Collaborative, HEMAC, I'm going to shorten that, which aims to bring together a diverse group of partners committed to addressing the issue of declining male achievement rates in higher education. So by fostering collaboration, sharing best practices, and supporting innovative approaches, HEMAC seeks to address these challenges and promotes academic success for men across the nation. And I should point out that the colleagues that were involved in this discussion group are planning on sending, drafting a proposal for the college to join this initiative and then also attend. There's a conference in April, I think, that they were interested in attending, so they're looking, I think, to draft a proposal and arguing why this would help JCCC with student success. Last December, also last December, 50 faculty members attended the ADA Open Lab, which was basically an open lab with EdTech and faculty development folks to meet accessibility standards with our online and, of course, generally all of our classes. You probably know there was a rule published by the Department of Justice under title "Two of the Americans with Disabilities Act," and so EdTech and faculty development have been working to support faculty in how to make their classes accessible for all students. 49 STEM faculty attended the STEM faculty retreat, supported by the Grants and Leadership Development Office, faculty development and then STEM faculty as well. They basically, that retreat featured a keynote speaker on AI expert Beth Zients and various breakout sessions. Lastly, I'm just going to put some dates, some save-the-dates in front of you, just so you have some upcoming stuff going on this semester. This Saturday's the first one, so. This Saturday, the Midwest Trust Center is hosting MTC Kids Jam, and I think that's just a neat little family event for kids and stuff. At 10:00 a.m. in the lobby, there's going to be arts, like arts and crafts activities for the kids, and then 11:00 a.m. in MTC, there's an hour-long concert with Funky Mama and I'm told, an acclaimed children's musician, so I think that should be pretty exciting if you have children. On Tuesday, March 4th, we will have KU sociology professor Dr. Brian Donovan here to discuss his latest research on the Taylor Swift fandom, also known as the Swifties, and he will be presenting his research in a program titled "Parasocial Relationships and the Cultural Power of Taylor Swift." So again, that's on Tuesday, March 4th, from 11:00 to 12:15 in Yardley Hall. That event is organized by Dr. Eve Blaubomb, professor of sociology here, and also is part of JCCC's Society Series. The Night at the Nelson event is always in the spring semester as well. This year, it is Friday, April 11th, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Nelson Atkins Museum. At that event, JCCC employees select a work of art from the museum's collection and analyze it through themes that speak to them in their fields. Last year, approximately 400 people attended. This event is organized by Allison Smith, who is a professor of art history and the Chair of Art History and Humanities. One fun fact here is JCCC is the only college in the metro area that has given the entirety of the museum to have this annual outreach event. And then my last one, you know, I love the JCC STEM poster symposium. The STEM poster symposium this year will be Thursday, May 1, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and also from 6:00 p.m. to 7:15 p.m. Lots of, I think they do one for the night students, right? And that will be in the collab, as it has been, so you may recall from past years that students engage in real-world research in their classes, and then they do a, they basically have a conference-style poster presentation where they explain their research to whoever wants to come. It's open, it's open to all, and basically, people, faculty, staff, community members, whoever, volunteers to judge that event, and the top poster presentations receive scholarships either in the amount of $1,000 or $500. I am told that in the last seven years that this event has taken place, there was a pause for COVID, but in the seven years it has taken place, JCCC has awarded $19,000 in student scholarships for these STEM students. This is, symposium is organized by professors Lori Slaven in Chemistry and Brenda Edmonds in Math, the JCCC Foundation, and the JCCC collab. It also includes a variety of local businesses who come to meet our students, and you know, they're thinking like, "Hey, future employees, let me get," you know, so it kind of connects students to potential job opportunities. And then we also have a multitude of sponsors who financially support the event. I will say, one of the core sponsors for several years has been Hutamaki. And that concludes my report.
It's always a delight to hear what's going on, and you know, professional learning days, some people dread them, but I recall when I was on faculty, I really looked forward to hearing things about what was going on around campus and some of the things that I could increase my awareness of. Gen A is something I'm still trying to get my head around. I'm not real sure what years that even encompasses, but I guess we're starting over with the alphabet now, so. I did want to briefly comment about AI, and then I'll open it up for comments. You know, we think, I often hear artificial intelligence and education referred to as a negative thing. In other words, kids are going to use AI, and they're not going to learn anything because they're just going to generate everything with ChatGPT. I think it's really, really wonderful that the faculty and the administration, everybody here at the college, is embracing artificial intelligence in the ways that it can help us do the things that we need to do, and not just the negative impact it can have on education. And so, so you're a little skeptical.
I think it's a bit of both. I'll just say that, like, there's always going to be the, yeah.
That was my point, really, yeah.
But yes, there are, I think there are people, like you're saying, around campus that are trying to think about how can we train our students to be employees in an AI world.
Yes, absolutely. Any questions or comments? Yes, trustee Ratan, and then trustee Jennings.
In your report, we heard about Generation Alpha, which I'm going to need to Google, AI, brainstorming on future workforce needs, how to serve neurodivergent students, and accessibility needs, and so much more. And one of the things that we say about community colleges is how agile we are to meet the needs, and it doesn't take that long to bring something new in and transfer that to the students' knowledge. So thank, just a thank you for all you and all the faculty and staff that are always looking to the future to make sure that we are riding the wave and imparting that skill and knowledge to our students.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thanks.
And I just wanted to say thank you, too, because there were a lot of sessions that dealt with mental health needs and how faculty can work with lots of different people to support them to continue at school. That's huge.
Yeah, and it's such a, I know I've talked about it before, but I think we're all in agreement that mental health is one of the challenges that we need to face that on.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the folks at the dais? Any questions or comments from the folks on the phone?
Yes, trustee Rayle, I wanted to ask if I could get those dates in print because my fingers were furiously trying to look up Funky Mama, and then we quickly switched to Taylor Swift, and I just got lost, and there were so many great things that I want to know about, and keep track of, so I would really appreciate those dates in black and white, if Professor View would not mind.
I can send that, or maybe send it to Caitlin. I don't know if that'd be better. I can just maybe cut this piece of the report and send it to Caitlin and have her distribute that out. Yeah, absolutely.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
And trustee Smith-Evatt, I'm sure that really the issue is you need to go to the Tay-Tay event, and you missed that date, so you're asking for all the others as cover.
I don't know. I don't know what you're talking about. I don't recognize that at all.
Taylor is March 4th.
Well, thank you. Thank you as always for your comments. Always appreciated.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Next up is the report for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle, and trustee Smith-Evatt, are you prepared to give that report even though you're remote?
Yes, I am.
All right, you have the floor.
Thank you. JCert received $2.1 million in sales tax in December 2024 and distributed $708,000 to each of the three universities, university entities, for a total of $8.4 million distributed to each of them in 2024. The December 2024 sales tax receipts were up almost 9% from November and over 8% from November 2023.
November 2023. The 2024 annual cumulative was up $248,000 or 1% from the year previous. So I just wanted to provide that information and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Trustee Smith-Evert? Thank you, as always, for your report. Next up is the KACC report and Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. KACC did not have a formal meeting, as you'll note, except we did meet today with Donuts with legislators. So thank you for everyone who attended that. Our next meeting will be actually Friday, April 11th, for the PTK recognition event at Hotel Topeka at City Center. And then our next quarterly meeting will be May 30th and 31st up at Highland Community College in Asheson. And Heather Morgan did send along future dates for just note and reference. August 2025 will be in Garden City. December 2025 will be down in Cali Community College. Then April 2026, PTK will be in Topeka and May 2026 will be at Allen Community College. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Any questions about the KACC report? All right, hearing none, we're just flowing right along here, aren't we? Next up is the Foundation Report. Trustee Ratan.
We switch gears.
Yeah, we weren't sure when the transition happened, so I defer to Trustee Jennings.
So Trustee Jennings will be giving the report.
All right, take it away.
So we just met, actually, this Tuesday of this week. And I have several items, so it's kind of lengthy. So the Cohen Community Series tickets went on sale in late October. We are thrilled to host Lee Bryce as the performer this year. We are expecting a sold-out crowd and a special VIP experience prior to the concert. VIP tickets can be purchased for $270 a seat, which includes a reception before the event. If you go to www.jccc.edu/vip to purchase those VIP tickets. The concert will be held on March 1st. Fox 4 News and The Bluff at the Polo Fields Development are both sponsors of the event and a few more sponsors have pledged as well. A reminder that the JCC Foundation, this is exciting, will partner with the Nerman Museum and the JCC Fashion Design and Merchandising Department on a very unique fundraiser on May 10th. It's called A Match Made in Heaven. So we've got Catherine Bernhardt, who's from St. Louis. She's a very famous artist, visual artist. And Jeremy Scott, who's from Hickman Mills, Missouri, and his parents still live there. A Match Made in Heaven brings together contemporary artists, visual artists, I'll say, Catherine Bernhardt, who was born in St. Louis, Missouri, and American fashion designer Jeremy Scott, born in 1975 in Kansas City, Missouri, who now parents live in Hickman Mills, both known for their creative work that engages with themes of consumer and popular culture and irreverent humor, creating a dynamic pop culture extravaganza. It's the only thing like this that they're doing. That's my part. There are, they have two, there are two elite artists working in disparate mediums who transform the mundane into the spectacular. This fundraising event will transport participants into a vibrant world of pop culture through food, fashion, and art. The event starts at the Nerman Museum and this, and event sponsors and VIP guests can also attend an off-site after-party. Proceeds support Nerman Museum operations and art education activities and JCC Historical Fashion Collection Preservation. Save the date, you won't want to miss this unique event. I think it'll be one that people are going to be talking about for a long, long time. It's going to get a lot of press. Save the date for the Third Annual SIPS and Scholarships Event on June 26, 2025 at the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. Cindy Green and Tracy Osborne-Oltgen are co-chairs of the event this year. Stay tuned for more details. PLD Week, JCC Foundation will be launching a payroll donation campaign to encourage staff and faculty to support the Student Basic Needs Center through donations made through their payroll. Foundation ambassadors are being recruited at the department level to help support the efforts to engage and involve employees across campus. Currently, only 6% of staff participates in this effort, known as our Open Pedal Society, and our goal is to increase that amount to 25% this year. Funds raised in 2024 were also used to support the Student Basic Needs Center. An end-of-year mailing went out to previous donors for the first, excuse me, the first week in December. Donations received from this appeal will support our general scholarship fund. A five-year pledge for a new, for a new endowed $250,000 scholarship came in at the very end of this year. A significant end-of-year gifts also included $100,000 for a museum acquisition for the Nerman and a $26,000 for student basic needs. And I just want to add on to that, that Joy shared with us, that that $26,000 is kind of a random number, but the donor asked what was needed to fill the gap and it was $26,000. So that's what they plugged in. New sponsorship packages have been created for Midwest Trust Performing Arts Series and Arts Ed Family Programming. Some enchanted evening recap stats were 18% increase over last year in income, a total of 1.160 mil, and 21% expense overhead, and in, which is wonderful because the industry's standard is 25%. So they kept the cost really low, the overhead cost. Survey highlights were on this event. Student speakers were rated 87% exceptionally great. Student integration received 4.61 stars out of five. Johnson Countyans of the Year was rated 89.1 exceptionally great. Overall enjoyment of the event, 4.63 stars out of a five. Would you attend again? 4.8 stars out of a five. And 4.73 stars out of five would recommend supporting the JCC student scholarships through C to a colleague, employer, or a friend. That concludes my report.
Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments for Trustee Jennings? Anything from the folks on the phone? I just wanted to make an observation. You mentioned a couple of times about contributions that are being made to the Student Needs Center and the Student Basic Needs Center. And, you know, I often think that in Johnson County, we forget that we have students who have real needs in terms of food and housing and just the basic needs that they need to be able to succeed here in an academic environment and how wonderful that we have the opportunity to provide some of those things. So it's terrific that the Foundation is supporting that and I applaud whoever the donor was that gave those funds to make up that difference. It's an incredibly valuable resource for our students who really need that stuff to help them succeed. So thank you for that. I've been informed that Mr. Grigsby got held up somewhere, so we'll hear from him next month on the Student Senate Report. I know he wanted to be here, but something came up and he was not able to make it. So with that, we'll proceed to our committee reports and recommendations. And Trustee Hamel, I know that you have a few recommendations for us to bring forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting on Wednesday, January 8. Information related to the meeting can be found on pages 1 through 4 of the board packet. Rob Caffrey, Vice President, Information Services, CIO, provided a quarterly information services report and highlighted various information services, projects, initiatives, and review the IS strategic principles. We had Adam Kalor, Deputy CIO, reported on activities related to enterprise application support, network and data operations, and academic technology support. Philip Mean, the Executive Director of IT Security, provided information on security update. We had financial ratios presented by Megan Casey, Interim Vice President, CFO. She reported on the fiscal health using financial ratios based on audited financial statements through the most recent fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. This information is compiled annually and monitors certain JCC financial ratios over time and provides comparisons to other peer institutions. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Faculty Planning, provided committee with information on facility projects from the capital acquisitions and improvement matrix. We have the following recommendations. The first one comes from Rachel Leers, Executive Vice President, Finance and Administrative Services. She presented a draft of the calendar year 2025 Management and Finance Committee Working Agenda. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2025 Management and Finance Committee Working Agenda. Second, I so move.
I have a motion by Trustee Hamel, a second by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion?
I do realize usually the motion comes before the second.
I was a little bit there.
We're giving grace tonight, right? So, all right. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed.
The last two came from Jim Fieker, Executive Director of Procurement Services. Here are your two bid recommendations. One is for the locomotive training simulators. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal of queries for the base of $202,340 and a total estimated expenditure of $262,688 through the renewal options. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Jennings. Any discussion?
Actually, I'll say, this is actually paid for through a grant and this is a, ones that are mobile that we can take around to multiple areas that we can serve multitude of other people outside of just the campus itself. So it's a pretty, pretty big deal to get these.
I was going to ask if we can get like a, like a demonstration. I'd love to do a locomotive simulation, right? Drive a train, right? Is that on your bucket list?
Right.
All right, thanks for that clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. And there's a lag between us and the phone people, so I want to try to give enough time. So, all right, you may continue.
Yes.
Not that much of a lag.
Thanks for that. Go right ahead, Trustee Hamel.
The last one we have is for Multimedia Services Audio-Visual Equipment. It is a recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the cooperative purchase from AVI SPL LLC for a total expenditure of $253,468. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion?
Do you have a, do you know how many classrooms this will address and help?
So what I, what I have learned, I've asked quite a few questions about these over the years, and these are quite often just a bunch of random cords and a bunch of things that are happening just all over campus that are being replaced and.
So it's not like, it's not seven classrooms?
It's just like everything they use, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. You may continue with your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Next up on the agenda is the Student Success Committee Report and Trustee Ratan.
Thank you, Chair Rayo. The Student Success Committee met at 9:45 AM on Wednesday, January 8, 2025. Information related to the meeting can be found on pages 5 and 6 of the board packet. Barry Bailey presented new courses, course modifications and deactivations, a new program, program modifications and deactivations, and general education designations effective for the 2025-26 academic year. Dr. Sheila Mopin asked Dr. Thomas Wheeler, the Dean of Industrial Technologies, to present the new affiliation with Toyota Motor Sales USA. Dr. Mopin then presented the remaining affiliation with Johnson County Developmental Supports. Dr. Mopin invited Chad Sanner, Dean of Healthcare, Public Safety, and Wellness, to speak to the connections with JCDS. More information and affiliation agreements can be found in the board packet. Dr. Mickey McLeod presented the 2025 Student Success Committee Working Agenda and no changes were made. So it is my recommendation, it is the recommendation of the Student Success Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2025 Student Success Committee Working Agenda and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Ratan, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Trustee.
Go right ahead, Trustee Smith-Evert.
Okay, thank you. My question was, and maybe it's on the consent agenda and I didn't see it, is there a list of any anticipated program closures? I think just with the last few program closures that we've had or, or kind of ramping down some programs and sunsetting them, I am going to pay more attention to those lists. And I wondered if Trustee Ratan had any that she wanted to report out to the Board of Interest to note.
I can answer. So this is Judy, and we, we did talk about that because I know that it's been requested that we come up with a process, a documented process. And so we are working on that to be able to show, kind of start to finish, what a program would go through if we were looking at it. Plus, there are programs that go through the program review process. They may end up in, on the vitality report, it may show that there's some reason that they're in revitalization. Wouldn't necessarily mean that we were thinking about deactivating that program, but for a variety of reasons, there could be things that need to be, you know, curriculum adjusted or equipment or a number of things. So we are putting together that process so that we would be able to show from kind of start to finish the steps that it would go through. The report of that or the, you know, presentation of that process will go through the Student Success Committee when we get that completed. And then as part of that, there will be a point in the year that that summary of the vitality report will be shared. So it wouldn't be a list that would come out on the consent agenda on a continual basis, but it would be, once that right, vitality report is done, there would be a list of programs potentially that were part of that summary. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I really appreciate you being cognizant of that request from the Board. And I definitely would appreciate it being sort of presented upfront from any Student Success Committee report so that, you know, it's easy for things to get buried in the consent agenda. And I try to look through all of it, but just because I look through it doesn't mean I pay attention to every detail. So I appreciate that you all will work on kind of a one-page flow chart to, you know, just keep us abreast of those things. Again, having no surprises is what we prefer. And with the last couple of programs, it's really helpful to have that information way ahead of time before we're voting to close them. So thank you, Dr. Corb, for addressing that. And I think with that, that is going to be my last comment for the evening and I will be signing off. I apologize, I can't attend the rest of the meeting.
Just really quick, before you go, that would, it would not be on the consent agenda because it's not something that you would vote on. It would be presented in Student Success as an informational item so that we would keep you informed.
Yes, I understand that. That's, I'm saying, I appreciate that it's not going to be buried in the consent agenda and I hope that whoever's reporting out from Student Success to the Board, that they make sure that that's in the Student Success Report to the Board.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Smith-Evert. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? When the, just as a follow-up question, when the process is discussed within the Student Success Committee, I guess, first of all, do you have any idea when that's going to be?
Wait, Mickey's working on that. Wait, Mickey's working on that.
Yeah, I'm working on it actively right now. It will probably be March.
Okay. I think it would be my preference that we have that presented again to the full board just so that we're all sort of educated about that process and what it looks like. We don't need to have the information about the programs that are on the vitality report, just the process, whatever, whatever it is that you're constructing to sort of educate us on that.
Sure.
I think that would be very helpful. Okay. Trustee Ratan, you may continue with your report.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we need to vote on the working agenda. We had a motion by Trustee Ratan and a second by Trustee Mitchell, and then we had some discussion. Discussions now concluded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero because Trustee Smith-Evert is no longer with us, on the phone. She's with us somewhere. Okay, thank you for saving me, Caitlin, as you are so prone to doing.
Yes.
Now you may continue with your report.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Very well. It's a good thing this is a relatively short meeting because I'm clearly not, not on my game here. All right, next up is the President's Recommendation for Action. And first up is the Treasurer's Report and Trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ended November 30th of 2024. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. And so it is my recommendation of the college administration and the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month of November 2024. Subject audit, and I so move.
Motion made by Trustee Hamel, seconded by Trustee Ratan. Did I hear that? Trustee Jennings. Sorry, I was not looking in your direction. I apologize. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. You may continue with your report, Trustee Hamel.
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. That brings us to the President's Monthly Report to the Board and Dr. Judy Corb.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to stay in keeping with the fairly short report. So Happy New Year 2025. We're 15 days in. So far, we've already done a lot of things 15 days in, but so far we have survived a blizzard. Kudos to the maintenance and ground crew. They did a great job of cleaning all of the parking lots and sidewalks. It was especially tough one because of the ice that came first, but they took care of it. We only had to close a couple of days, so they did a great job. The posting for presidential applications closed last week. We're in the middle of the review process. We welcomed faculty and staff to spring semester with breakfast on Tuesday and a week of professional learning opportunities, which you've already heard some about. Included in that were open forums to discuss the, and gather input on the strategic bridge plan on the draft that we are working on. They were part of the, that week's, the week's activities. Also, the facilities master planning process kicked off with an overview session and then also some of the initial focus group meetings took place. We took a run at, um, operating without the internet for a few hours.
It was exciting.
It was. You were here for that. We, we got that taken care of and we found and decided things work better with the internet than without, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep it. You've already heard about the amazing, unique, first-of-its-kind event at the Nerman that we are expecting. And right now they're doing the exhibit installation. So if you were to go over there, you would just see all kinds of amazing things. It's going to be fabulous. And so anyway, that is happening. We have also, in the midst of all of those things, we have been enrolling students, prepping classes, ready to welcome them back to campus next week. You'll see you have a copy of the, just a synopsis of the enrollment report. At the time, this was done on January 7th. We were up about 5.8% in headcount and 4.8 in credit hours. That, that was on the 7th. That does not include the dip and drop for non-payment and then the rebound, but even with all of those things, just the way we're trending, we're expecting to end up right around that, that 5.8 is probably a decent number to, to look at, but we won't have the final number in for a little bit. And that concludes my report.
All right. Blizzards, internet outages. Other than that, Mrs. Lincoln, how'd you like the play?
Didn't you think though that we did a lot of other really good things in the middle of that?
Right, right. Any questions or comments for Dr. Corb? Hearing none, I'll just, since you brought up the, the president's selection process, might be a good time to provide just a very brief update on that. Applications, as you mentioned, have closed. We will be having interviews of our semifinalist candidates next week. And so it's moving right along and we're very optimistic. We had a great pool of candidates to choose from. It's going to be a very difficult decision, which is always good for that sort of a process. So that's my brief update on that. Any other comments?
Nothing for me.
All right. Next up is new business. To the best of my knowledge, there's no new business, nothing has been brought to my attention anyway. Old business, we also have no old business that I'm aware of, which brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for the board to take up in a single motion matters of a fairly routine nature. You can find the consent agenda in your board packet on pages 17 to 27. And at this time, I will ask if there are any requests to pull any item from the consent agenda before we take our initial vote. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Trustee Ratan. Do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. There is no executive accession tonight, just confirming that. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I know, right? But I need a motion.
Second.
Oh, Lee made a motion. Lee, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you up there in the ceiling and I continue to look at the ceiling like you're up there.
Madam Chair, I have never been done in less than an hour. Nice job.
57 minutes.
Motion made by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Hamel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And motion carries six to zero. Thank you all and we'll see you next month.